It is 6:31, so I'm going to go on a call us to order. Commissioner Hasty, will you lead us in prayer, please?
Sure. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day and for many blessings that you have given us for health, strength, and peace. We play a special blessing on our city, our community, and all that serve and protect us. And tonight, we play a special prayer for Commissioner Tim Oshizer and his health issues and that everything will turn out just fine. Be with us as planning commission members that we will do what is right for our city. These things we ask of none of you.
Caitlin, will you call the roll, please?
Evans. Hardwick.
Here.
Hasty.
Here.
Longmire.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Silkwood.
Slattery.
Here.
Coker.
Here. That was eight here. Okay, thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right. Next up on the agenda, we have the acceptance of the agenda. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve as presented. We have a motion from Commissioner Silkwood and a second from Commissioner Slattery. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Next up on our agenda is a public hearing on a request from Rob Cushman to rezone 1.85 acres.
That one, we're just going to tell them that one, we're not going to have that one.
Okay.
We're just noting that we're not having it.
Okay.
Because they withdrew it.
Okay. I'm going to note, but this public hearing is on a request by Rob Cushman to rezone 1.85 acres from industrial to general commercial, but the applicant has withdrawn the project. But the public hearing is continued from January 2nd earlier this year, but it's listed from reference only, but we do have four people that have signed, or five people that have signed up to speak.
For the other.
Oh, this for the other, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I looked at this wrong. Okay. So, we will save that other one on that. The next one, the other public hearing we have, and this is what the five speakers have signed up for, is a request by Talbot Real Estate Holdings to rezone 6.59 acres from industrial to general commercial, plan development, and to make amendment to the general framework map of Hendersonville Land Use and Transportation Plan to change the character area designation of the property from employment center to suburban center. And as mentioned, we have five speakers signed up for that one. The first one on this, and you're going to have to forgive me, I need glasses and I still haven't gotten them, so I'm going to ask the director to help me out with this, the first name right there.
I will try that.
Okay.
Fernando Casas?
Yeah.
Croso.
Okay. Will you come up and introduce yourself and state your job?
So, I'm with the ownership group that, I apologize, yes, Fernando Croso.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm from Columbus, Ohio. My son, Sam, is my business partner. He lives here in Hendersonville, 707 Shoot Lane in Hendersonville, Tennessee. So, I signed the form first and certainly can speak to the Business Football Five, but we have a zoning consultant, Jim McFarland, that we were expecting to speak first on it and then introduce myself and Chuck, unless you guys want me to describe the business first.
What else? You may not be familiar with our process, or you'll get, as the presenter on, or as the applicant, you'll get the opportunity to present when we take this on. You don't have to sign up for the public hearing on this. So, if you'd prefer to wait till we get to that on the agenda, you're certainly welcome to do that, and then everybody that's with you can speak to that as well.
Okay, sure.
I think that'd be a better way to do that.
Perfect.
So, you mentioned yourself, I heard you mention Chuck and Jim. Is, who else is from your team here? So, is there anybody who's signed up for this public hearing that is not with y'all's group on this?
Ray Moore and John Moore.
Okay, Ray Moore and John Moore, okay. If you want to, we'll just get to you when you're on the agenda, so thank you. So, Ray Moore.
Hey, as you said, my name's Ray Moore. I live at 2101 Center Point Road. No, not in the city, but I am a member of, longtime member and a trustee for the Lakeview Church Christ next adjoining property. I just don't know anything about the project much because I can't find any information on anything, but we have some concerns and wanted to let you know. One thing being the biggest thing is the noise we're concerned about. We noticed from the information given that they will have soccer games all week long and all day Sunday, Saturday and Sunday with outdoor field, which pretty much always means a PA system. And we have worship services twice on Sunday and on Wednesday evening as well, and we listen to the dogs now from the Humane Society. We can hear them and know that the PA system for a ball game is going to be very distracting, very destructive to anything we're trying to do on Sundays, possibly Wednesday nights as well. That is a real concern for us, the main thing we're worried about. But I question the location on a little dead end cul-de-sac, very narrow road, no shoulders, and the fact that, what I see so far, there's not a lot of parking designated in this site. That may change with, I don't know, but when you get tournaments, you got two teams at a time on the field and one game following another, that could easily be six teams on the property at one time and other, all these people. I don't think, I don't know anything about soccer, but I know a lot of people show up for these games. That parking issue is part of the problem that concerns me because our church building parking lot kind of backs up to that area. It would not be the first time people decided to use our lot and walk through the woods to get to, or through the whatever we left there to get to this agenda and this event, and I, that's a concern as well. With the shortage of really little undeveloped commercial property there is in the city of Hendersonville, right in the middle of town, I don't see how this can be the best use of it. Surely, an athletic situation like this will not bring in the tax dollars that actual businesses would do and that get in that valuable property there. As just among many things, the traffic on New Shackle is a nightmare already. You get all these people coming in and out of there, the two-lane road and no light and no direction, it's going to make it all worse. I can't think of anything good about it, other than it probably sounds like a good facility. It'd be good to help the kids and so forth, but I think it'd be better places to put it than right there in the middle of town. There's nothing around there like it. That's partly why the, probably why anyway, that the zoning is what it is now. There's, that's zoned for something other than that type of thing for a reason. I think it'd be better for them to look for a better place, probably a bigger place, somewhere a little away from the center of town. Hmm, I can't, I guess it's pretty much my list of my concerns. There's, I'm sure other things will come up if it, if it were in play there. I can see it being an aggravation of thinking about, well, like I said, the next door is residential, will be residential, the Grace Place Development, and right out the back of their door is going to be this PA system. Again, it's the Humane Society and those poor dogs are going to have a heyday with barking at the kids and the noise, and they bark enough now. Just all negative, just because of location, not to do with their business plan, but I have those concerns. Looks like, anyway, I will sit down and wait.
Thank you. John Moore.
I'm John Moore. I live at 1069 Morning View between here and Gallatin, but I've gone to church, sir, at Lakewood, at Lakeview, old age, I'm sorry, for 47 years. I came back there 47 years ago after being gone for a year or two. Church has been there for over 50 years. I know, I'm echoing what Ray's already told you, and our concerns are mainly the noise and intrusion. I won't bore you with repeating everything he said, although I agree with everything he said. We've been there for over 50 years as a congregation, small Christian church, and we feel like we're entitled to worship in peace, although I know God's people have been persecuted for thousands of years, and I think most of you understand that too. And I'm not against soccer. I, I'm 71 years old, so I don't have any teenage kids, but I didn't have any kids that played soccer, but I understand, I had a lot of friends that did. I have nothing against it. I understand it's a very popular game, and I understand people want to make money on it, and I have no problem with that. I think, I love capitalism, best system in the world, but it's the location, and it will be very intrusive, we feel, on our worship services. I don't know what else to say to you. I think that your tax base would benefit from being something else there that is a lot more geared to high-paid employment. There will be several people in a place like this, but we all know that a lot of them will be part-time or temporaries or as-needed, and they won't be the high pay. I've got to believe your tax base would benefit a lot more from something else, and I'm not antagonistic to anybody or anything, I just, I want to be left in peace, and I want to leave everybody else in peace, and I ask you to let us be just that. And I'll just say amen to everything that Ray said. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Was there anybody else that intended to sign up for this public hearing that did not get the opportunity to do so? Seeing none, I'm going to declare this public hearing closed and move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes from our January 2nd meeting. I'm going to entertain a motion to approve.
Go ahead.
I have a motion from Commissioner, a motion from Commissioner Hasty and a second from Commissioner Longmire. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Next up is our consent agenda. There's one item on here, it looks like, and Sidney, I'll let you, you look like you're the lead planner on this, I'll let you briefly tell us about it. Okay, she's not here. I didn't notice, okay.
Yeah, so, this is, Century Steel is currently located off of South Center Point Road. They've been there for quite some time. They acquired some additional property to the north of them. They wish to use that property for storage, so that's what this site plan does, is allows them to store equipment outside. They're not proposing to add anything. The parking that you see there in the layout plan is old, existing parking lot. They're just going to leave that as is. They'll put up some screening for, some landscaping for screening, and then a fence, and that's, that's all this is, it's just a little storage lot.
Thank you, sir. With that explanation there, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. We have a motion, Commissioner Silkwood, is there? I think there was a second there from Commissioner Martin on that, and Commissioner Evans. We'll give it to Commissioner Martin, he's closer. Caitlin, will you call the roll on that, please? Actually, we need to move to electronic vote on that, so let's just move to that. Jason, are we available to do electronic vote? Okay, just a second.
Eight yeses, zero noes, and zero abstentions.
Next up on our agenda is item eight, and this is where we will actually go to the future land use plan amendment for what we were just talking about on the public hearing on that, and so I'll ask the representatives and the developers to come up again. Just kind of be wanting to let Timothy kind of introduce this, but if y'all would kind of be prepared to speak as well on that. So, Timothy, will you kick us off on that?
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
So, this parcel is located at the end of Innovation Way off of New Shackle. It's adjacent to and east of the future Grace Place Development in Lakeview Church, also backs up to the Jason Foundation. It is zoned industrial. The current future land use plan shows this as employment center, which aligns with industrial Football Five is a multi-sport complex, and they will be proposing one indoor soccer court, an outdoor soccer court, and then some indoor pickleball courts and a gym. The industrial zoning does not, does not allow for outdoor recreation, and then indoor recreation is only allowed with a conditional use permit. So, they are proposing to rezone the property to, from industrial to general commercial with uses limited to indoor recreation and outdoor recreation. But in order to obtain that GC zoning, the future land use plan must first be amended to go from employment center to suburban center. They have agreed to all staff comments, including agreeing to bringing the building architecture and materials into full compliance with our building design standards. I would just point out, in your, whoever makes the motion, either a motion to deny or approve, make sure you include specific findings of fact. I've got a copy of those for anybody who wants to make the motion. That includes the amendment is or is not in agreement with land use plan, there will or will not be significant adverse effects upon adjoining property owners, and then conditions affecting the area have or have not changed to a sufficient extent to warrant an amendment, the land use plan, and subsequently the zoning map.
Thank you, Timothy. If you would, sir, if you're ready, if you'd introduce yourself and...
My name is Jim McFarland.
Please.
My name is Jim McFarland. I reside at 84 Skyline Drive.
Can you speak up just a little bit or step a little closer?
I reside.
You can push that microphone up towards you a little bit.
All right.
Yes.
I'm at 84 Skyline Drive, Asheville, Ohio. My company is called zoningresources.com, and I was contracted by the applicant to facilitate helping to get this project rezoned. We've worked for over eight years with projects in 19 different states, and we've been involved in different amendments comparable to this, especially with pickleball, that seems to be a hot item as well as soccer. And we do think that this is a very wonderful use of the property, given the nature of professional soccer coming to central Tennessee and gives an opportunity at Hendersonville to be a place for the kids who already are involved in that sport to be able to have another place that they can participate. Likewise, I also grew up in the church and have a lot of empathy and sympathy for the challenges when other sports-related activities, whether they are near the church or not, take away from, sometimes from folks coming to church, but that's one of the things that we've seen a lot of benefits from, from our families and folks that have participated in youth sports, is that the noise and the types of things that will happen just show the vibrancy in the life and the youth being involved and being active, as well as just an overall focus on wellness and lots of communities are looking for. And I know the architect's going to speak to the, some of the separation distances and things can be put up to help kind of prevent folks from kind of tramping through and parking over at the church parking lot, as well as adjustments to some of the speakers and things that'll help reduce the amount of noise and other items like that related to things on Sunday mornings and on Sunday night and on Wednesday night when churches are having services. I'm going to introduce, Fernando's been one of the folks, he's one of the main folks that's going to be running this project, his son, Sam, as well as Chuck, who's the architect, and hope you get able to answer your questions specifically related to more of the technical aspects of the parking, the ingress egress to the side, as well as hours of operation, lighting, sound, other things that can become nuisance, so that we have an opportunity tonight to get those addressed very specifically, so the church can feel at peace and at ease, and also take advantage of this wonderful opportunity for kids to participate in the area. So, Fernando?
Thank you. So, a little bit more about me, businessman, central Ohio, own environmental company, logistics company, and limo transportation company in central Ohio. My son owns an Airbnb business, three properties here in Nashville. He played sports all his life, football kicker for University of Cincinnati. As soon as he was done playing football, he moved down here in Nashville, growing community, very, very good for young people to start out and start businesses. By happenstance, he moved to Hendersonville. We wanted to get him away from East Nashville and, you know, start growing a family, I've got two grandsons now, and good schools. And then, as we tried to flesh out this idea for Football Five, we realized that there's nothing like it in Hendersonville. There's nothing like it within 51 miles of Hendersonville. So, there are existing sports and rec facilities down by Franklin and the other side of Nashville, but nothing out this way, nothing in Gallatin, nothing yet, you know, on this side. We feel that most people, adults and adults for kids, will travel up to 25, 30 minutes for exercise, sometimes, sometimes more. And so, by putting this facility in Hendersonville, we feel that the growing area of the city itself and Gallatin and farther out will complement this business, you know, perfectly, and even folks that are closer to Nashville on the east side will travel out this way. We picked Hendersonville for that reason, just so happens that he lives seven miles from that land, so that is ideal as well. Soccer is a tremendous sport, but it's not just going to be about soccer, it's recreation, it's fitness. We're very respectful businessmen, and certainly I did not know that there was a church there. There won't be a PA system. Soccer doesn't generally have a PA system, like baseball, for example, but we had no plans to put a PA system or make any loud noises outside of cheering, the normal cheering that families would have. Based on our drawing, I'll let Chuck speak to that a little bit more, you guys have asked for the appropriate amount of parking, and there is significant parking, and it's important to us, right? Because there's, there's one football, one soccer field outside, and, and yeah, there could be some tournaments, and it could be, as the folks mentioned, potentially up to six teams worth of fans there at any given time as it cycles through. So, we wanted to make sure that we did have sufficient parking, people wouldn't need to park on the streets, and that is a problem, you know, for families that go to these sports type facilities. So, we feel that we've addressed that. I'll let Chuck speak to anything that we can do to make sure that none of the fans, none of our customers encroach on their property. And then lastly, before, and I don't know if we open up to questions, certainly I'm open to that. Financially, from a tax standpoint, we think this is a tremendous opportunity for the city. So, not only will we be generating revenue, but we will have a facility that other entrepreneurs that want to start a personal training business, but they don't want to, they can't afford the brick and mortar and all the equipment, they'll be able to start this business here through Football Five. That revenue that they'll be generating as a business is taxable dollars for the city, employees certainly, and then the local community, the restaurants and the hotels and the businesses that will prosper and grow because we'll be bringing in these people to play soccer here, potentially tournaments that would need hotels and whatnot. We're excited about that. So, we think that this particular location and the size of it is perfect for our concept, and Hendersonville is an ideal city for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. If y'all just want to hang out over here, we're probably going to have some questions for you.
Hello, my name is Chuck Messer. I'm from 3649 Watt Road in Westerville, Ohio. So, to touch base with some of the concerns, as Fernando indicated, we have no intention of having a PA system anywhere on the property, nor for the indoor or the outdoor facility. We do have a plan to fence in the entirety, the entire of the property to keep anybody from going on to adjacent properties while they're here at our soccer facility. We did work through the zoning process. We had a few amendments that we had to make to the site plan, one of those being additional parking. We have allotted 250 parking spaces on the property, which we feel will be more than enough to accommodate anything that we have coming on at our busiest time, as well as shared easement access to Grace Place for sanitary and fire access. We also plan to add additional fire hydrants and things of that nature for fire suppression that Grace Place will also have access to on the property. As stated, we are more than willing to confide to anything that you guys would like to see happen with the site development plan as we continue to work through some of the things. We do not plan to go over 30 feet of elevation. That was a concern from the fire department. That will be our high point, and then, yeah, that's, there also is a stream on the back of the property. We have no intention of disturbing that stream whatsoever, and we will play everything back to the high point of the water flow, to that stream access, without any disturbance, and as well as an additional fire turnaround to the field side of the property. As you can see, it dead ends there. We need to add a fire access there for fire trucks to be able to access, and that's kind of the high point of the property. It's going to primarily be a few offices inside with the indoor soccer facility, that is, or an indoor soccer rink, that is a hockey rink around a soccer field, and then the outdoor facility will be a full-size 11V11 field that we can segregate into smaller fields for youth tournaments as well.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wanted to present from y'all initially before we open up for questions? Okay. Before opening up, questions from commissioners, I just wanted to kind of ask a question of my own, just so I can help wrap my mind around this. Obviously, you've helped say what your layout is. I want to get a good sense of what your business model is here. I want, is...
I want to, is, are tournaments going to be your primary focus? Is it going to be training for, personal training for soccer and coaching for soccer players locally? Just help me get a good sense of what you're going to be doing here primarily on that, because that'll help me get a good understanding of what you're trying to do.
Yeah, so although it'll be owner-operated, operated with Sam on, onsite the entire time, the concept of, let's say salon lofts type business where somebody owns this building and, and independent hairstylist, nail people, eyebrows and whatnot, they work in there and then they're on, they're on, they're their own independent business, men and women. Same concept, we, we will partner with service providers that specialize in personal training. And they'll be their own independent entrepreneur and they will go and get their own clients, 15, 20 clients and use our facility to train both from a fitness standpoint, speed and agility using our turf fields. That's, that's the main source of, of, of revenue. From there, we'll partner with local soccer leagues. I believe the city of Hendersonville has a, a soccer league and other, there are other big soccer leagues within the Nashville area. They're looking for facilities like this so that they would come in and say, hey, you know, now we're offering indoor soccer leagues and outdoor soccer leagues at all age levels, adult as well, in Hendersonville. And they manage it, they hire the referees, they, they collect the, the fees from the teams, they pay Football Five a rent. Certainly we'll have concessions. And then other types of trainers, right? Somebody that specializes in massage therapy or cryo. Anything that complements sports and rec that would go well with, with our image would, would potentially be that. And then there, then there would be some big events and they wouldn't be all the time, but like a tournament. Various sports, field hockey, lacrosse, soccer, along with the leagues, we would have that available. And then we would look to partner with a club. So there are big soccer clubs here in town. Our facility is going to be state-of-the-art, it's going to be aesthetically very pleasing and it's going to be a turf field. And so I would think that whether it's an existing club or, or an up-and-coming new club, they would want to have our facility as their home to train their club teams and for games. One thing I didn't mention that, that Chuck reminded me, the, the, the facility that's going in next door, we think that's a tremendous opportunity for them as well. It's a home for battered women and children will be there as well, is that right? And so walking distance from our, from our facility, a place where these women potentially could exercise and, 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 and really, you know, do things and their kids also can, can play sports. So we're very excited about the fact that they would be there and potentially, you know, come, come in and use our facilities as well.
I think somebody made reference to what your hours of operation would be. Made references, I didn't catch what those hours of operation were going to be though, could you share?
Sure, yeah, I think the, the standard 8:00 AM to, to 10, 11:00 PM would be what, what the possibilities would be. Indoor soccer leagues generally run like 6 o'clock at night, 7 o'clock at night, in some cases till 10 or, or 11. Certainly we'd follow all the noise ordinances and whatnot. Initially, I don't believe we have any plans for lights, for outside lights. And so the, the extended hours will probably be inside.
Thank you. Questions, comments from other commissioners? Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much for wanting to bring this business to Hendersonville, see the, the beauty of our community and wanting to put some more roots down in here. You've answered a lot of questions already and I thank you for addressing the concerns of the church members as well. Something a little outstanding in my mind though, can you walk us through the ingress and egress a little bit? I do have some concerns with big tournaments coming and going, plus people trying to get personal trainers, how that is all going to flow? And if that stacking in and out with the cars would be feasible? And Timothy might want to, Mr. Witten might want to weigh in on that too.
So the plan would be to, oh, I apologize, I was going to point on the board. The, the plan would be, we have added additional parking to the backside of the facility, the north end of the facility. As well as directly off the cul-de-sac, we will have an access point that will flow through Grace Place as well. That was requested by Fire. Oh, nice. Where's the laser? Does it reach that? So right here will be an access point that will go through the Grace Place property that was requested from Fire for them to be able to access from Grace Place and exit through our cul-de-sac if necessary. We do, it's not shown on this plan, but it is part of our most recent review that we got back from zoning, that they would like us to add a fire turnaround here. So this will have a hammerhead here and shorten this up slightly. And then we'll add a few spaces up here to this part as well, as well as some landscaping that they've requested that we put in as well. But primarily it will flow through, the, the point of this layout would be for those who are specific to the building, the indoor facility, would access these parking here. And anybody who is there for the field would be able to come down to this bottom, this is more overflow for us. And then up at the top part as well. So everybody will enter off of the cul-de-sac, but we feel with 250 spaces and the business model that we have outlined, that we should not exceed that at any given time during operation. Director Free?
Yeah, I believe, I believe, and Stephen, you might want to correct me if I'm, if I'm incorrect about it. But the, the access to Grace Place, I believe that is emergency access only. I, I don't think that's going to be open for full vehicular access. Okay, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Did I read someplace that pickleball is also part of this, this business plan? Well, I'll echo what Commissioner Silkwood said, I'm very excited to see you considering Hendersonville for something like this. Just a couple more questions about the sort of salon suites model. So as a business, you're not offering any of the training or any of the, those ancillary services? You simply are providing the facilities and all of the equipment? Or is it, I mean, I'll just use the hair salon analogy, because that's one I can wrap my mind around. The stylist provides everything other than power in the room. They provide their own cabinetry and sinks and chairs and everything else. So draw a little more parallel or, or not to that for me, please?
Sure, so we will, we will build out and, and provide all the equipment in there. So the, the gym equipment, state-of-the-art rogue fitness equipment, we'll have the soccer field. Obviously the, the fields and the nets outside will provide all of that. Yes, we are planning on, on running services out of there as well. What they are today, we're not 100% sure. Sam can teach anybody how to kick a football. There are kicking camps that, that a lot of people host throughout the United States that generate significant amount of income. So that will be one thing that he would do. He's also a personal trainer himself as far as, you know, being able to train people. There, there may be smaller type soccer training, coaching that he may do or somebody on our staff would do. We're going to provide this place, you're absolutely right, the salon loft is completely hands-off, right? And the SBA in the banking world would, doesn't want to hear that that's what our business model is. Sam will be onsite working and doing these types of things because SBA requires that, number one. Number two, we have the talent to, to, to do that as well. That was just some way of being able to explain to, to the folks that we aren't planning on hiring 20 personal trainers. There are very qualified people coming out of the schools here in, in Tennessee that specialize in kinesiology and, and, and they want to start their own business and would, would love an opportunity to have, you know, Football Five be their, be that home.
Thank you, and, and just one other question. What are, there was one of the questions I'd written down, what do you anticipate being your employment numbers? Either at the beginning, then obviously, who knows in the future, but what is your initial plan?
Sure, so, so from an employment standpoint, probably five or less initially, year one. From a revenue generating, tax generating source, somewhere in the 25 to 30 individuals that are either doing their own business. We would outsource cleaning, for example, or a cleaning service would come in. So, you know, they'd have those employees, we would run concessions, there'd be management and probably outsource security, that type of thing. But yeah, the, the number would be, you know, in the, in the 30 to eventually 50, maybe more.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments from Commissioner Hardwick?
Couple of different areas of questions. If I remember correctly, that site has some topo issues, it's not overly flat. Are you going to be building a retaining wall at the back of the property? Are you going to be able to do it with regular dirt and slope it or to, to get that field flat?
Chuck? Our plan is to tier the property. There is some, some topo issues as you stated and there's not a lot of topsoil onsite.
Welcome to Tennessee.
Yeah, a lot of bedrock. So that will actually help us quite a bit on the, on the foundation side of things. But for the field system, we will have a, a tiered property where we will have to drop the level of the field where it is already at its low point. And then put the proper drainage down there and everything to not overflow the, the, the field will have underground drainage. It is a field turf, not an AstroTurf or anything like that. So it will be able to handle water as well as flow. And then we'll tier that property with a step up to the actual facility.
So that, you said step up, so the field, the outdoor field itself will set lower
Correct.
than the building, the parking area, so you'll walk down to that field?
Well, the, the, the drive down to the field area will have, will be sloped down with the grade. I believe we have a 30-foot elevation, elevation drop from the high point to the low point, which is backed by the stream. So our plan is to have a drive that will go down there to that tiered level and allow parking for people who are around. That's kind of why we broke the field up and didn't put it right up on the building, is because of the way the site is laid out. So they'll be able to come in at grade where it's at now. That will be the height of the building and then we will use the natural grade of the site to tier that down. There will be, there will have to be a retaining wall around, around the field, but we don't feel that will be a large problem for us.
So with the field setting lower, that should help with some of the noise issues that the church has?
I believe so, and plus we plan on putting a, a eight-foot property fence on the backside of that property anyway. So that should keep anybody from going across, plus by keeping the stream in that natural space, that allows a buffer between that zone as well. So yes, and that, and we believe that the field being the low point will also help with drainage for, for the site overall. Because the field can handle a lot of that.
Are you guys open to providing a fair, and when I use the word substantial, I don't know really what that means?
Sure.
Other than providing some good evergreen shrubbery trees to help block noise out between your property and the church's property? With the field setting lower and you're not providing a PA system? And if you get some good tree buffers in there, I'm assuming you'll be working with staff?
The site is heavily wooded as it is.
Yes, very much so.
We do not intend to, there's not much left after this development plan. The open zone at the top part, the north end of the site map, that will remain, all of those trees will remain. And we do plan to add additional shrubbery trees and stuff due to the tree ordinance that you guys have, tree replacement plan. So we will also, in doing that, have to pay into that as we have a lot of hard space. So we will have to pay into the tree replacement plan with whatever we are short adding to our property. But we are more than open to add shrubbery if that, shrubbery trees if that's necessary.
At the backside of the property, it looks like there's, there's a big open area that you probably have topo issues with and it's headed down towards the Humane Society and all of that area. If that's heavily developed and tree, then that again should help with noise abatement.
And that is our plan to not disturb that area.
Okay.
At, at the initial, at the initial point.
So on the inside of the building?
Yes.
I've heard pickleball courts, I've heard soccer courts, I've heard training. When, when my kids were that age, we traveled many miles to go do baseball pitching lessons and I could see kicking lessons. So I'm, I'm hearing a lot of different activities in this building. I'm assuming it is, on the interior, it's going to be more just a big open building that will, you will adapt to whatever is being used at a given moment? Or talk to me about the interior layout and how that's going to work. We've talked about pickleball courts, I know I don't do pickleball, but everybody I know does and they think I'm weird. How are they going to be set up to where that if someday one of my friends says, hey, let's go play pickleball? I call and say, I need a court for an hour. Talk to me about the interior layout and just how all this is going to work.
Absolutely, so with the 20,000 square foot, our plan would be to have the field in the northwest corner, up against the outside of the building. That's going to give us the most amount of space towards the south side of the building. That will primarily take, the field is going to take up a large portion of the building inside, especially with the boards, the hockey rink boards around it. We do plan to have some office space in there for trainers and other individuals to have spaces to operate their business within. The pickleball courts would be to the south side as well as the concession area. And, and yes, we will have access to, if you wanted to come play pickleball, you could come play a pickup game anytime you wanted. But the, it is a pre-engineered steel building, that is our plan. We have a, there's, thank you. We do plan to use some stone face to dress up that front a bit, I know that was a concern. The color scheme that we, we put on here was initially supposed to be black with brick along the bottom and brick around the door space. And then inside would be a engineered wood floor throughout the building wherever there's not turf or the boards. So, and then we'll have the rubber matting inside, it'll be fully insulated, that should help with sound barrier from anything leaking out of the building during activities. But yes, that's, that's, that is the plan, everything will be netted off as well to, so the pickleball courts would have nets around them to keep anybody from getting smacked by a stray pickleball or soccer ball. So we have taken all that into consideration for sure.
Thank you.
Of course. Commissioner Slattery?
Pickleball suddenly sounds more dangerous. You're going to get smacked, Commissioner Hardwick. Just one question about your business, have you done this other places? I did a little bit of Googling and I found a Football Five in Tampa. And I found the Football Five name is owned by some organization in Canada. So I'm just curious if you have the same concept in other locations?
We do not, so I was born in South America, Uruguay. My father played professional soccer in Uruguay, I played Division One soccer at Syracuse. When we visited Uruguay to visit family, there's no, it doesn't snow in Uruguay. So this is their summertime, we would be there in July, it was winter, but it was still nice weather. And they had these Football Five concepts, they had these outdoor fields, smaller, 5V5 soccer fields. The kids were little and they loved it, I loved the concept too, right? It's very basic, not what we're talking about, but that's where we got the idea and that's where we got the name, Football Five. Sam has already incorporated the name Football Five Nash, I believe, and FootballFiveNash.com, the URL. So, but no, we are businessmen, we, we, we understand business and, and we know how to make money and we know how to market a business and, and succeed and we're excited. But we haven't done this particular business. I know I have paid probably for four or five college educations with all the money I've spent on him and his brother at these types of facilities, for sure. So I'm very familiar with the business and how it works and how they take my money, so I'm, I'm happy to be on the other side of that here soon.
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Hasty?
Couple of questions, some from the staff, maybe. Is there a section of the zoning ordinance that stipulates the number of parking required?
Yes, there's a parking ratio that would apply to the indoor recreation taking place inside the building. And then another parking ratio on top of that would apply to the field. So, they required to have at least 219 spaces based on the current layout and they provided at least 220.
So, they've met the parking requirements?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I know in your comments, they don't meet the building design standards. They mentioned some brick and some modifications. Do they have a plan that meets those design standards?
Not currently. The staff comment does say that they will have to comply with commercial building design standards. Of course, this will come before y'all at the site plan stage.
Okay.
Once it gets through General Committee and then two readings at BOMA, once the CDP gets approved, then it comes back to y'all for site plan approval. At that point, they'll have to address that staff comment. That does mean, you know, the commercial design standards are quite a bit different than the industrial, like the Serp Pro building next door, kind of similar to this. If this gets transitioned to GC, a whole nother level of design that applies. So, 60%, I think it's 60% glazing on the front, significant wall articulation, cornices, a lot more than is shown here. Y'all will have to wrestle with what's appropriate for a general commercial lot that's kind of sitting within an industrial context.
I understand. But you say that you don't plan on putting any lighting on that outdoor field?
So, I said that there's no current plan for any lighting outside to address the concern of the noise outside. It wasn't, certainly no PA system. Now, if that would be possible down the line or we come back, but initially, our initial concept doesn't have for night play outside. And again, if we wanted that, would there be an opportunity to come back and ask for it and add it at a later time if our business turned that way?
I think that would depend on how this planned development is set up. If the commissioners decide that they should not have lighting at this time, you could impose that on the CDP. Or you could just, I mean, as it is now, there's not like a restriction in commercial zoning against having outdoor lights or, but certainly if the commissioners decided to impose that, then in order for you to have lighting, you would have to come back to the commission and I think amend the FDP to allow that.
Is there a noise ordinance? I imagine 10 o'clock, is that the time?
Eleven, I think.
Eleven?
I think.
So, again, our plan currently doesn't have for lighting. But if, if allowed, we'd like to have that option to have it unless you guys vote against that and you make that decision. But I would respectfully ask that we would be allowed to add lighting if we wanted to.
I think if your business model, if you're going to have all the soccer tournaments and all this whatnot in the summertime, I mean, they play at night. You know, I think you need to make that decision quickly about lighting because it could have an impact on the rest of the community over there
Sure.
with a big lighted soccer field out there.
Yeah.
And I noticed on your plan, you don't sell any bleachers.
I'm sorry, that we
You don't have any bleachers for the outdoor field?
Yeah.
None?
I mean, we could certainly add bleachers. Generally, a lot of these types of games and tournaments, parents bring their own soccer chairs and they sit on the sidelines and whatnot. But it is something that, you know, we could add. I think those are things that you just bring in and lay out in the space. Would there be something that we would have to address that in this initial design as well if we had those types of aluminum bleachers?
I mean, we're looking for a comprehensive development plan. I think that would be all-inclusive.
At this point or at the
At the site plan specifically.
Okay.
But when I'm looking at what I see here, man, there ain't no space around that field to put bleachers. And if you're going to tier that topography, you're looking at retaining walls all down through there, I believe. Because you're going to have a hard time contouring that much grade elevation with a building, a small space, all parking, a small place, and a large field. It's going to be tough on them. Some engineer to grade that site, so.
It's not the, it's not the most ideal land. You know, I, we found it and then Chuck got the topography and he's like, yo, there's seven feet of dirt. And that's when we came up with the tiered concept that we feel can work. Chuck did look at the space off the field with the proper amount of distance for safety and he felt that we could do the standard drop and play aluminum seating for high, all the way down the backside of that next to the parking lot, that there was room for that. Again, we haven't accounted for that in this design, but we certainly will take a look at that.
And you mentioned a fence. I hope you don't plan on putting a chain link fence around that area. That's what you plan on doing, put a chain link fence all the way around?
He's the guy that builds it. I don't know, I don't know what he's planning on doing.
Would you, would you answer that?
Well, a chain link could be privacy.
Well, I would, through the design stuff that we've gotten back from zoning on requirements for the exterior of the building, I just assumed that you guys would not want a chain link fence wrapped around the property. So, no, we would plan on doing an eight-foot privacy fence, either wood or vinyl, whichever you guys prefer us to use, we can use. But no, I do not think that you would want a big chain link fence wrapped around this property. So, that is not our intention.
And one other question that I have for the staff, and then I'll shut up. What we're doing is we're taking a prime piece of industrial property, which I think that's where Pella Windows at one time was planning on building their site. And we're going to put it in commercial. Now, if these guys come and all, I wish them all the success in the world that you're totally 100% successful and we got a good piece of commercial property there, where we're giving up a good prime piece of an industrial property for commercial in the middle of an industrial area if that's not successful. And then what's going to happen? Somebody's going, what's going to happen to it then as a commercial site? Something I think we need to consider when we do rezonings of this nature or recommend rezonings.
So, not that we plan to fail. We never plan to fail. But the way that we've designed this building is very similar to some of the warehouses that we have designed in our current land or construction in Columbus. So, we feel that through this design and through a prefabbed engineered building, that if the worst were to happen, it could very easily be gutted out and used as a warehouse facility for any business that you choose to bring in and the site would already be developed.
If it gets rezoned for that use, if in event you do fail, you've got to go through the rezoning process again, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, what that, we've got, we've got kind of two things going on this evening. It's kind of a two-step process. That first thing is the amending the future land use plan. So, that's the first ask, is looking at that, that you can see right there on your map. That's within the Employment Center. And so, typically, industrial property is within the character area of the future land use that's in the Employment Center. And so, the first ask is to change that from Employment Center to Suburban Center. Because Suburban Center would then allow for the rezoning from industrial to commercial. And that's the second. So, on tonight, when the chairman is taking the votes, the first vote will be on the change to the future land use plan. And that stays right here at the Planning Commission. That doesn't go to BOMA. But then the second item that'll come up for a vote would be the vote to, for the recommendation to BOMA on the combined, the comprehensive development plan rezoning that would be forwarded to BOMA. But looking at it, you know, and looking at it, this is, this is not just a CDP rezoning. This is also a pretty significant amendment request to the future land use plan within that, within that specific area. I think a lot of times, you know, this is just something, just as you're evaluating it and comparing it to previous, maybe previous decisions to amend the future land use plan. Typically, a lot of those were a lot of smaller property. It was kind of on the edge of something that was already that character area to begin with. So, just if that answers your question, Commissioner. Thank you.
Going to go with Commissioner Martin next?
Yes, thank you for bringing your business here. I like the site plan and the buffer between, the field is at the furthest remote place and you've got the buffer against the church. I like that. I think you said there's a 30, you wanted a 30-foot building height. I think general commercial is 75. And maybe this is more of a question for the staff, but would the 30-foot be part of the development plan or would it still be 75 feet?
So, the support's ringing. Yeah, so this planned development, I had a staff comment that the maximum building height should be 45 feet. That's what it is in industrial. I felt like that would be appropriate for this. That would be the absolute max. But what they're proposing is 30, 30 feet.
Okay, so part of the development plan would be 30 feet, not 45?
No, it would be 45 feet.
Okay. All right, that's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Martin. Commissioner Silkwood?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I anticipate this being a pretty popular space. And that leads me back to the parking question again, question for Mr. Witten. So, you know, on this parking map that's shown, as the applicant stated, the turnarounds for the fire apparatus are not shown. So, once you account for that, will they still meet the parking minimums? What I'm concerned about is it, you know, if you have big tournaments and all this stuff going on, you may end up with people trying to park along Innovation Way. And that's what I really think we need to be concerned about. So, that's my question. If that fire apparatus turnarounds, if those are added in and those parking spaces subtracted, will they still meet that minimum?
They would be required to. So, hasn't been designed yet, but they'll have, they'll have to design around that by putting that fire turnaround in, the lewisman's space is there, they'll have to make them up somewhere else. They have to meet that minimum parking requirement of 219.
Correct. So, potentially even making the building smaller if need be.
If that's what it takes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hardwick?
My question is for Timothy and Keith. Is there a way to do this? Because I think I'm hearing some hesitation about it being commercial if in the future it needs to go back to industrial. Is there a way to say that we're going to give you a conditional use and if for whatever reason you guys decide that you're going to move on, because it's been so wildly successful, you need 12 acres or 20 acres? I'm trying to stay away from the negative side. That it would then go back to industrial and we wouldn't have to deal with, with potential commercial problems? Or is that just not an option? And I do agree with you that the way this is designed, I think you could put another building where the soccer field is. This would make a great industrial site. My understanding, the reason Pella did not take this site, they couldn't afford the grading. And that's why they're going to open a building over, or they're renting a space over on East Main Street. But that's, that's my understanding is why they didn't do this. But back to my question, is there a way to do that? I think they're going to be very successful. I'm still concerned about the church. I do not want to see them try to have worship services and people screaming and hollering. But with the field setting down lower than the other building and with the metal building and with the trees, hopefully that's going to be mitigated. But I am concerned about the zoning issue.
Yeah, there wouldn't be, there wouldn't be a way to put conditions that would let it revert back. So, if you did approve it, then it's done. It doesn't mean it couldn't be undone, but you know, what the possibilities of that could be in the future? You know, changing the future land use plan back and then also changing the zoning. Certainly, you could restrict the property. It would cripple the property if it wasn't used for this use and you pretty much hamstrung the property that it could only be used for this use, which is possible with the, with the development plan. You could limit the uses so narrowly that it's really just this particular use. But that would put it in a situation if they ever grew out of this use in a positive way, grew out of this use, then you know, you'd be looking to have to do a rezoning to really get something else, something else in there
To restore the value of the property.
And then, you know, one of the things, and Timothy kind of hit on it, is the property is its own industrial. You could do part of this with a conditional use permit with the indoor recreational training facilities. It's the outdoor thing that doesn't allow it to stay as industrial is having that outdoor field. That's the only thing that isn't really permitted. And so, this path of doing a development plan was a way to limit what commercial uses could be in there, but get the things that they were looking for. So, that's kind of why the ask is what it is from the applicant. But there's not a way to put something in there in the approval that would let it easily revert back. It's pretty much when it's done, it's done. It doesn't mean that can't be undone, but you know, there'd be a whole process involved in the future and there'd be no guarantee that it could be undone.
So, from a staff perspective, what is your concern that again, going from the positive? Because I truly believe they're going to be successful. Like you, I spent a whole lot of money when my kids were that age and my, my kids are now spending on my grandkids a fortune, like Cheerville and all the other places that that they do. So, what is the concern that if it is commercial, they outgrow if they leave? What could go in that would be a negative that we would not want? Because it's industrial. It's always going to be an industrial facility, is the way I see it. And we'll have to just rezone it at the time.
Yeah, I mean, it would then be allowed for whatever, whatever limited commercial uses there are. I'm not sure what those are that are in there. Maybe Timothy can address what those uses are at this particular time that's in the, that's in the ask. But I don't think it's anything where if it got rezoned to commercial, it's super detrimental. I think really, as the Planning Commission is evaluating, you know, evaluating this whole ask, it's really looking at, you know, a full understanding, which I think the applicant has done very well to explain what it is, the business model and kind of what all that they're wanting to do. And then what maybe the value of that would be to the community. And then looking at that, you know, we have an industrial area with industrial zone property, with other future industrial area around it. And just trying to weigh whether the trade-off of changing zones for this use, you know, makes sense from a, from a planning standpoint. And Timothy, what are those uses that they have on there right now?
Do you have a concern that if, if in 10 years they outgrew it, we would have issues before it got rezoned back to industrial? Because I'm assuming the new owner would want to take it back to industrial and the Planning Commission at that time, unless they saw some reason not to, would do that.
So, they, their list of allowed uses shows only indoor and outdoor recreation. I did have a, in my initial comments, I did suggest opening up that a little bit more to provide some more flexibility for some other uses. But ultimately, this is, this is what they resubmitted was just for those two uses. So, if this gets, if this gets approved, it's only So, if this gets if this gets approved, it's only good for indoor and outdoor recreation.
So, then what's going to happen is is they need to sell their property. They may come back and ask for it to be rezoned back to industrial so it'll increase their value at that point. So, okay, I'm I think I know what I need at this point.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Evans.
I guess I should say something here. I'm still confused about the business model. I see a I see a gray building with nothing in it. I see a green plot of land that I've heard lacrosse, I've heard soccer, I've heard several different sports, and I look around and I barely see how a car can drive through there, much less a place for bleachers or whatever. And I'm sure your plan, you'll put it together so it'll work remarkably well. But in your in your it appears to me from what conversation I've heard that you're going to build a facility and then you're going to build out based on what interest you get. And I understand how entrepreneurs think. I do get that. But this is almost like a if you build it, they will come thing. And I think you're tightly packed for what you're trying to do on this piece of property. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, so, you know, our our vision is more quality than than quantity. You're absolutely right. We could buy 10 acres and put three outdoor fields. In a way, you're absolutely right. If we do build it, they will come for sure. But what you don't see on that drawing is that soccer field will have netting, and the netting will split the soccer field into three smaller fields. So, you could have an 11 v 11 type event, or you could have the smaller tournaments or the smaller leagues, 5 v 5, which is the same as the indoor soccer. Somebody mentioned earlier about what other types of of businesses could could happen in there and how would we utilize the space, right? So, the gym equipment is the gym equipment, and then the turf will allow for anybody that's interested in in training speed and agility or any type of X game type thing, flipping tires, anything outside. A pickleball instructor can teach pickleball lessons and and run a business inside there. A golf instructor, there's going to be netting, a golf instructor can teach, you know, golf swing, softball pitcher, baseball pitcher, they will have areas within the facility to to teach their their craft. So, the the field itself will be lined, like most high school fields, in that it's not going to just be lined as a soccer field. The the professional lining will be field hockey, lacrosse, football, and soccer. And so, we we're not restricting ourselves to just soccer. Yes, the name is Football Five, and aesthetically, we have absolutely no problem meeting your your requirement for how it's going to look because we want it to look next level, right? We go to Boost Fitness right now, and it's just, you know, a shell of a of a place and inside it's all tattered from the balls hitting, you know, the insulation. That's not what we want. We want a quality location and people will come, will have big screen TVs inside, they'll watch their kids play soccer or any kind of sport or train, and then potentially they'll have a pizza and and watch a ballgame there as well. So, we we have a very specific marketing plan to go after who we know would want this space, and it's not that expensive to run, to be honest with you. It's you're right, we are entrepreneurs, so we're very optimistic and want to, but we're realistic as well, and we have a business plan and and it's not expensive. Imagine if you were a personal trainer and you had 20 clients and you charged those 20 clients $500 a month to train them. So, that's $10,000 a month. And I said to you, I've got this amazing fitness equipment that you can use in my building to train your people, and I'm going to charge you 20% of your take, right? So, so you, as the personal trainer, are going to pay Football Five $2,000 to utilize the space for your 20 clients. What other expense do you have as a personal trainer? That's it. You're 80% clean. You'll be throwing that $2,000 at us, and we're going to do that 20 times. So, a building like that, property like this, is about $4 million investment. That's about a $25,000 to $30,000 a month not to cover. So, you get 20 people doing that type of business at 2,000, 2,500, 3,000 a month based on their use, and then and then concessions, and then tournaments, and then club. It's not hard to make money with this.
Other questions, comments from commissioners? I just have another one for myself, and this may be an impossible ask, but I'm going to throw it out here anyway. Obviously, the elders from the church here have mentioned interference with their services. Wednesday nights and Sunday nights are going to be hard to avoid, but Sunday mornings would be the easiest to avoid on that. I want to say not only concerns from them, though, but once Grace Place gets built, you're also going to have some residential next door, too, on that Sunday mornings. Even if they're not worship service, they're going to be that's that's a restful time on that.
Sure.
Is there any way that y'all would agree to limit outdoor use on Sunday mornings before 11 o'clock or even before noon on that? So, just to be respectful of both the church neighbors and Grace Place then?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And historically, if I'm not mistaken, the boys are a little bit older now, but I think that most leagues don't start in the morning on Sundays because they allow for their athletes and their teams to worship. So, that would not be a difficult ask at all. We're going to be respectful neighbors, and certainly if if what we're doing affects their business in any way, we would always appreciate a knock on the door and we would we would work with them. But that's that's not difficult, not because you asked that of us, because we're definitely willing to concede that Sunday morning. But but I would like to understand what what is required of us to amend whatever we have before you to allow for lighting? Because as somebody said, now that I think about it, I'm probably going to need that, again, respectful of noise ordinances and and whatnot, we're probably going to need to be able to play some games into dusk. And so, if if that happens now or at the next phase, just let us know. We'll put that in, and then you guys can vote on it.
I'll let staff tackle that, but I'd also ask staff in conjunction with that if there's a way to kind of codify what I've just mentioned on the time restrictions of Sunday morning, too. Now, that's either Timothy or Director Free if they'll address that.
Yeah, so the the other with the lighting, if we just don't even really put anything in there about lighting this evening, that can be handled at the site plan. So, we can we can get into that at the at the site plan. On the issue, Mr. Chairman, that you said and the applicant, from what I understood, agreed to, agreed to amend their application to to put a stipulation that there will be no outdoor use of the outdoor fields on Sunday mornings before noon. And it would just be adding that language in the motion. So, an emotion, not on the future land use plan, but on the the development plan rezoning, would be making a motion of this sort. Motion to approve the development plan and rezoning with all staff comments with the addition of the restriction to any use of the outdoor field on Sunday mornings before noon. And so, that would kind of cover what what you're talking about, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Free. Commissioner Longmire.
Well, I just I think it's been covered by Keith, but I agree with what you're saying, and I think that would be a good thing to incorporate in the change.
Any other questions, comments from commissioners? I will entertain a motion on a future land use amendment if there's a commissioner that would so like to make one. Not everybody at once. Commissioner Hardwick.
I will make the motion, but I need to have bindings of fact and all. Is someone going to help me with this?
Yeah. This is on the rezoning, right, Timothy? This is just a rezoning for this, right?
But it does it does address the land use plan.
Okay.
Not Byron.
Okay, hold on just a second.
I'm sorry, did they?
That's okay. Yeah, just the bottom one, C. If you want to use C as defining the fact for the future land use plan, not the ones above.
So, I'm making a motion to change the future land use plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, I make a motion, we change the future land use plan as what has been presented with conditions affecting the area have changed to a sufficient extent to warrant an amendment to the area's land use plan if required and subsequently the zoning map.
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Hardwick with a finding effect and a second from Commissioner Silkwood, and we'll move to an electronic vote on that. Thank you, Caitlin. Now, we'll I'll entertain a motion to approve the comprehensive development plan with all staff comments, and if somebody would be so amenable to mention my suggestion of limiting the outdoor field use on Sundays till after 12:00 p.m.
So, I will make a motion that we approve the dis development plan as has been presented with all staff comments and that the outdoor fields will not be used until noon on Sundays. Along with the amendment is in agreement with the land use plan, as has been done, and there's no significant adverse effect upon adjoining property owners unless such effect can be justified by the overwhelming public good or welfare.
I'll second that. So, there's a motion by Commissioner Hardwick, a second by Commissioner Coker. We'll move to an electronic vote on that as well. Thank you. All right, thank you. Director Free is going to explain the next steps on this.
The next steps on on this this particular application, this is going forward with a positive recommendation from the planning commission. That's going to move to next week. So, next Tuesday evening, in room right outside this door, there'll be the Board of Mayor and Alderman will have a general committee meeting, and then at that meeting, the item will be discussed and possibly moved forward to a first reading at the Board of Mayor and Alderman two weeks after next next Tuesday. And then about then if it passes first reading at the Board of Mayor and Alderman, then there'll be a second reading in a public hearing about 30 days after that. So, that's the that's the process. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda is item nine, site plans. We have two. The first one is for Jen Hill Construction, and it looks like Timothy, this is yours, so let you do we have a representative from Jen Hill here about that? Okay, if y'all would just be prepared to speak one time. But Timothy, we'll let you kind of kick us off here.
Okay. Jen Hill is a construction services company. They're located on the Vern Circle. They are needing an outdoor, sorry, a storage building, pretty much a pole barn. They're proposing to locate that behind their existing building. It'll be open on three sides. The backside that would face their west property line would be enclosed, that would have metal siding on it, and then storage racks would be affixed to that side, and they'd have storage within that underneath that that facility there. The metal on the on the building would be similar metal to what they have existing on the sides and rear of their existing building and similar to metal siding that's on the the existing buildings to the north and and south of them, as well as many other buildings within that that park there. The this this is zoned heavy commercial. This whole area used to be grew up as industrial. I think it was in the 2013 citywide citywide rezoning. They got transitioned to heavy commercial, which is better aligned with the uses that were kind of cropping up there at the time. Of course, with commercial, you have different design standards. Most of these are older buildings that are metal and some, you know, brick on the front or some combination of that. The zoning ordinance does give you the leeway to consider metal on remote walls, that is walls that are pretty much invisible from the public domain. So, they did move the proposed location to be to be behind their buildings that would be mostly screened by that building. This does back up to the future Millstone Development. That development, that adjacent lot is shown on the Millstone Master Plan as self-storage facilities that are a split-faced block for the most part on that backside. So, that's what this would back up to if and when that ever develops. So, they're just asking for approval for that for that metal.
Thank you, Timothy. Would y'all like to come up and if you had anything to add to that? Be sure and introduce yourself as well, please. Thank you.
My name's David Hines. My wife, Jennifer. We've it's a family business that we've been in town for over 30 years, and over the years, our business has grown. We need more space. We looked for, in fact, Innovation Way, we tried to buy a lot in there and couldn't get approved years ago because of the hydrants. But we found this building and we moved in. We were over on Old Shackle for 20, how long? 19 years? And found this building, moved in, and as our business grows, we need more space. We have we'd sell a lot of materials and rolls, sell some pipe, and it's not conducive to the building that we have, but if we had a 40 by 90 building with access in, we can store it there. And we just want to be able to use the same materials that are on all the other buildings there. We've we've done considerable improvements to our to the building. It was a it's an industrial tool company before that, before we bought it. And so, we want to, you know, we I know that on the, you know, you all would like to see a hardy product, but a hardy product is 50% of the cost of this this pole barn. And there's you won't even see it. There's a 20-foot buffer of woods from the barn to our property line. And I mean, and we could even plant arborvitus behind it or something to block the metal or we just don't we don't want to get in too deep with a building that we're literally warehousing, just materials, forklift in and out. So, that's that's what we're asking.
Thank you. Commissioner Silkwood.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Well, first, thank you for being longtime family-owned and operated business here in Hendersonville. And I have to mention that I do board my dog next door at Jojo's K-9 Club, so I'm pastured building quite a bit, and I really like what you've And I really like what you've done with the exterior public facing space there. And frankly, you know, this storage shed is what it looks like to me, I think is a good characterization of it, is going to be, you know, backed up to an area where no one would see it at all from, you know, my multiple trips up and down Laverne Circle. So I frankly don't have a problem with metal siding on the backside, so thank you.
Thanks. Other questions, comments from commissioners? Commissioner Hasty.
I agree with Commissioner Silkwood.
I think I heard somebody say the word motion in there. Did I hear that, Mr. Hasty?
I'll make the motion for it.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hasty to approve with all staff comments and we have a second from Commissioner Silkwood. We'll move to an electronic vote on this. Thank you, Caitlin. Thank you all. Next up on the agenda is site plan for Little Sunshine Playhouse. Timothy, I think you were on this one as well. Do we have a representative from the applicant here on that? Okay, if you would, just be prepared to come up and speak on this. Timothy, I'll let you get started on this as well, please.
Okay. This is located on Maple Drive North, just down the street here. Y'all saw this back in October as a ad use for daycare to the master plan, which was approved. The layout that you see there is pretty much identical to what you saw last time. The, it is, it is in substantial compliance with that master plan. They have agreed to all staff comments with the exception of planning comments four and five, which have to do with the amount of hardy and brick and stone on the, on the sides and rear. And then, and then the, getting some, getting some additional wall articulation on the back of the building. Staff talked to the applicants this afternoon. They have proposed some, some changes to the rear, adding some dormers that you see Staff is comfortable with what they have proposed to address those two comments based on the superior level of architectural design that they have elsewhere on the building. Typically, we push for more brick and stone, maybe a little less hardy, but given the overall design that they've, they've gone above and beyond some other areas, staff is comfortable with what they've proposed here in response to those two staff comments. So they're just asking for your approval.
Introduce yourself and say something like that.
Jay Fulmer, 2002, Richard Jones Road in Nashville. And I want to introduce Brett Robel also. He is the founder of Little Sunshine Playhouse, first location here, but hoping to have more as time moves forward. Thank you to staff for working with us since Friday, looking at the modifications we made to the rear, even to the point they got it put in the slides today. So that was greatly appreciated. The, we don't necessarily disagree with comments four and five. Before the dormers, it was, the comments are exactly accurate. It was a big, large, flat roof and the dormers breaks it up. There will be a fence that encloses the whole back because a lot of children walk out that back door to get to the playgrounds. So you're not going to be able to really see it. The fence is a, is a very ornate decorative wood slatted fence at the other locations. It's very attractive, not a, you know, by no means anything you would be opposed to. The hardy really looks better from a, you know, 60, 75 feet away than a painted brick does. Been forced into that situation in some other cities and honestly, the hardy does tend to look a lot better in contrast with the stone. It does give a little more articulation. We were hoping the dormer satisfied along the roof line rather than actual building articulation, just because you do have kids. Kids bump into things, you know, they want to hide and they, so we hope you understand on how we're trying to address the breakup of that massing. But happy to answer any other questions you have and.
Thank you. Questions, comments from commissioners? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to approve with all staff comments.
Second.
I heard, all right, we're going to let go with Commissioner Hasty on the second here on that. We'll move to an electronic vote on this. Thank you all.
Eight yeses, zero nos, zero abstentions, motion passes.
Thank you. I appreciate you all sitting here for an hour and a half for that, so.
They learned, we learned a lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda, we have three resolutions to approve this evening. I'm going to read these and we'll kind of group these together and take them as a single vote. We have a resolution recommending acceptance of completed streets in Durham Farms, Phase One, Section 16. A resolution recommending acceptance of the completed streets in Durham Farm, Phase Three, Section 28A. And a resolution recommending acceptance of the completed streets of Durham Farm, Phase Three, Section 29. I'm going to make a motion to approve all three resolutions and I'd appreciate a second.
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Slattery and we will go to an electronic vote on Charles hadn't voted. Charles.
Oh, sorry.
Eight yeses, zero nos, zero abstentions, motion passes.
Thanks, Caitlin. Next up on the agenda is staff level projects approved. At this point, I'll turn it over to Director Free to kind of walk us through everything.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had two staff level projects that were approved. Community church blessing box at 381 West Main Street and a dumpster enclosure at Glen Oak at 105 Glen Oak Boulevard. Those were items that were approved. And then you can see on the very back of your agenda, the staff projects that are pending. We have about six, six or seven projects there and all those are fairly small projects. I can answer any questions that anyone may have about any of those items. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any additional comments you'd like to add?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I will share a couple of, a couple of items. I want to thank everyone for their involvement over the last couple of years with our Westlake Future Land Use Plan Amendment that was completed. That was a very exciting project. And the Board of Mayor and Alderman just recently approved all of the zoning ordinance changes and text changes related to that. So I appreciate all the diligence and hard work that the Planning Commission did in association with that. Also, I want to let you know, the Board of Mayor and Alderman just recently approved a sign replacement program in the Westlake area along West Main Street. We're going to be offering incentives for businesses up and down West Main Street to replace their non-conforming signs with signs that were more in conformance with the city, the city zoning ordinance. So we already have a lot of interested parties in that and it's, it's very generous and it should be, should be enough to motivate quite a bit of, quite a few businesses to do that and the tornado assisted in that as well. Also, also next week, we're going to be starting the process. Grant Green has worked and for, worked with a consultant to create a development impact fee study. That study and the recommendations are going to be moving forward to BOMA, to the General Committee, next week. We're looking at doing development impact fees associated with residential development. And then the revenue associated with those development impact fees would all go toward recreational and parks facilities. And so we're excited about, excited about that. Also, we're starting the process of looking at a 10-year transportation plan, working with city staff and multiple departments. We're going to be undertaking that here over the next four to six months. We're going to do that pretty much mostly in-house and working with the other departments. And we're going to come up with a 10-year plan that is a capital plan of improvement, of transportation improvements, not just very large improvements that we're all familiar with, but identifying smaller improvements as well. And then looking at, at those over the next, next 10 years. And that's everything that, that I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Free. With that, that's everything on our agenda for tonight, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion from Commissioner Longmire. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
And we have a second from Commissioner Martin. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you all very much. We are adjourned. We'll see you all next month.